Good evening, everyone. I'd just like to start off by reminding everyone this meeting is being recorded. Like to call a meeting to order. First order of business, Stanford Pledge for Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item is approval of minutes for July 22, 2024. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. The third item will be a resignation of Deborah Thibodeau, the town accountant. And before that that happens, I just would like to say a few words and have everybody else speak a few words about her decades here, doing an amazing job, being very helpful, always customer service oriented, a great teacher, explaining how things work, why, following up. We've spent many times going over the system and the numbers, and she's always patient with me, even though she's trying to do at least, at least 10 different things at the same time. And she did it, and she had to. So I'm gonna miss you, and I'm glad I got to work with you as well. And I'd like for some other members to say something, please. Carrie.
I think the best compliment I can give you is that we didn't talk about you much. When we needed something, it was there. There was no, there was nothing. I mean, I had asked you for something over the past year, and I was amazed at how quickly I got it. I thank you for that. You did a wonderful job. Enjoy your retirement. Enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for keeping everything balanced all the time. Thank you for your diligence and your hard work for the town. It's really incredible. And I'm a little bit bummed that we won't get to work together. But it's a good thing for you, for sure. And I hope you also find balance in retirement, the same way that you did for us.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you for your immense patience dealing with the unexpected issues that arise on a daily hourly rate around here. Thank you very much. Enjoy your retirement very, very much.
DA's office want to say something?
Well, other than keeping me out of trouble on a daily basis and telling me which ideas are great, and maybe those that maybe weren't such a good idea after all, I'm gonna miss that and having you down the hallway to rely on on a daily basis, semi-daily basis. So thanks for your service.
Adam.
Debbie, you were always such an iconic coworker to work with. It's a true loss for this town, and I'm gonna miss you a lot.
With all that being said, I would like to read a citation we were going to be presenting to Debbie Thibodeau from the Board of Selectment for Public Service, a public service citation. Be it known that on behalf of the people of Dudley, we now recognize Deborah Thibodeau in recognition of and with gratitude for her skill, patience, and work as town accountant for 21 years. She held this position with pride and professionalism. You have our sincere appreciation, given under our hands this fifth day of August in the year 2024. Debbie, would you please come up? Thank you very, very, very much for everything you've done. I look forward to seeing you.
By the way, the agenda was wrong. It's a resignation. It's a retirement.
Thank you for that. That is wonderful.
That was my bad. Oops.
See? Would you like to stand for some pictures, please?
Oh, okay.
That'd be wonderful. Yes.
Stand with us, Debbie. Chill down. Chill up.
Anything else was wrong that you could point out by camera or us?
Thank you.
Thank you. Beautiful. Thank you so much. Is this where you want to stand right? I would like to recognize our esteemed State Representative John Marcy, who has a bit of his own classiness to present.
Great word. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, everybody. Hi, Debbie. I just wanna say, I had a front row seat to watch your greatness over the last least 15 years. And it's hard when you see a lot of experience walking out the door, but it's better knowing that you're gonna be, you know, enjoying yourself in retirement. But you will be missed by the town. That I can assure you. So in honor of your retirement, I have a House citation for you from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts House of Representatives, and I'll read that to you. Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations for Deborah Thibodeau in recognition of your dedicated service for 21 years as town accountant for the town of Dudley. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors, given this fifth day of August 2024 at the State House. Signed by the Speaker of the House, Ron Mariano, and by me, John Marcy, State Rep. And congratulations, Debbie. We'll miss you.
We have a representative from Senator Fatman's office. Dewey. We also have a representative from Senator Fatman's office. Please identify.
Hello, I am Amanda Helyar, District Director for Senator Fatman. Debbie Thibodeau, very happy to be here today. The word to hear you are iconic is very, something I haven't heard before at a meeting like this, so that's saying something. The senator wishes he could have been here as well and extends his best wishes. We have a citation from the Senate. Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Deborah Thibodeau in recognition of your retirement from the town of Dudley for 21 dedicated years as town accountant. Be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success, the citation was duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to and a copy therefore transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate, signed by, says, Senate President Karen E. Spilka, attested to by Michael D. Hurley, the Senate Clerk, and offered by your State Senator Ryan C. Fatman. Congratulations.
Thank you, Debbie. Yes, please do.
Not with speeches, but thank you all. It's really nice. And I just wanna say that-
Can you come up to the Speaker, please? You've been out of it for six, 21 years.
No. Well, I don't even know how to do this, but anyways, thank you all for your kind words. I hope I was a good worker, and I really tried to be, and I'm getting really nervous, but I really appreciate all of it. I just wanna say that my, the new person, Sarah, is gonna do a great job, so you don't really have to worry. She's catching on. She's really smart. So I think we're in good hands.
Outstanding.
Anyways, thank you again. And now I'm going home. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. The fourth item on the agenda will be a public hearing, fiscal year 21, CDVG performance hearing and amendment hearing. The chair now opens a public hearing at 6:44 PM. Yes, perfect. Thank you.
How's everyone doing? I'm John O'Leary, Planner at Central Mass Regional Planning Commission.
Hi, John.
Nice to meet you. Nice to meet everyone. I'm sure you worked closer with my colleagues Andrew Lowe and Joe Ferguson. They are both out on vacation this week, so I'm the lucky one to be here in person to conduct this hearing. So just a quick little background on the Community Development Block Program. The town of Dudley received a fiscal year 2021 grant from the Housing Department of Housing and Community, excuse me, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development through the Massachusetts Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, Community Development Block Grant Program. The total value of the grant was $800,000. It included funding two activities, one of which was an infrastructure improvement project, and the other was a housing rehabilitation assistance program. The purpose of today, tonight's hearing, this is a mandatory hearing, and it's a summary of the activities funded by the grant and provides information and an opportunity for questions and comments from the Select Board as well as public. Going into the activities that were actually funded, the first activity being the First Avenue Improvement Project. A little background on what led to this project. The improvements to First Ave infrastructure were identified as a priority as part of the town's FY '19 Jericho-Brandon Infrastructure Plan. First Ave was selected as the first phase of the plan to be implemented. As part of the FY '21 grant, an engineer was procured and designs were completed to replace the existing undersized water main with a new eight-inch main and new control valves, to replace and add existing sidewalks and curbs, and to make spot repairs to the sewer main. Following several neighborhood meetings in March and July of 2023, a contractor was procured and construction began in August. The project was substantially completed in November. Final paving is to be done mostly under the town's recently, or more recently funded FY '22, '23 block grant program. So that wraps up just an update on the First Ave Improvement Project. The second activity is a housing rehabilitation assistance program. So the Pioneer Valley Planet Commission, which was subcontracted by CMRBC to oversee the HR program. The program funds home repair loans to income-eligible Dudley residents with a focus on code-related rehabilitation work. To date, three clients have been qualified. Work is now underway or set to proceed at two homes. It is uncertain if a third client will proceed due to estimated costs, which are far above the program limit and what is available in the remaining HR budget. If needed, another eligible client from the existing waitlist will move forward. In addition to the updates on those two activities, I'd like also to discuss a potential amendment to the grant. So there's some unused or uncommitted funds that remain within the engineering, design, and infrastructure construction line items. So back to that First Ave Improvement Project. So with the state's approval, some portion of these funds may be used for other CDVG eligible work. One potential amendment we're looking to seek the board's approval is to repurpose approximately $30,000 from the '21 grant into the reclamation of the road. So when it was originally designed, it was just gonna be mill and overlay, but based on the highway superintendent as well as the project engineer was determined that it'd be better product in the end if we could actually reclaim the road surface. So we'd be looking to reprogram that additional $30,000 into that kind of work, which should end up giving a better product on that street. And then just a kind of an additional note, at this point, we estimate that there's approximately about $60,000, which will be available to reprogram to other funds. So it could be additional housing rehab program or some other work that might come up in the '22, '23 program to continue or complete the First Ave project. So the most important one being that reprogramming that $30,000 from the FY '21 program into the reclamation work. So that's the update, and then the proposed amendment. I don't know if there's any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
I'm sorry. I just, just so the public understands, the First Ave project came in on the budget, and it's very specific in the grant how that money has to be spent. So the question here is, with that $30,000 surplus, should we repave the entire road surface? That's what we're asking to do with the money, correct?
Correct.
Which makes all the sense in the world to me.
And that stays within the requirement for the spending?
If the board approves that, it's the same grant, same money, came in on the budget, repurposed to repave the roads, that'll leave it in the current condition.
With the same guidelines?
Correct.
Okay.
So before we go to the state to seek their approval, we'd just like the Board of Selectmen to approve it, and then we go through the formal process with the state?
Mr. Johnson.
So we'd have to vote after the public hearing?
Correct.
Okay. One question, just for the folks at home. Let's not confuse this $30,000 with something that would be able to be moved to some other project. It has to be used within this project. It's not for a bridge on Mill Street. It's not for something somewhere else. It has to be reinvested in this, the main focus of the project.
Right. So, Mr. Chairman, any grant funds we receive have a specific purpose, for a specific use, for a specific project. You haven't gotten specific approval for that project. So every once in a while, and I don't blame, you know, people for their curiosity, if there's money left over, if we're getting grants, it's not just a blank check. It has to go to the project that it was approved, whether it's CDVG or Mass Works, or whatever the grant funding source happens to be. There's always a purpose behind the grant. It can't be used elsewhere.
Okay, and probably a timeframe in that to be used, and then you have to account for it at the end?
Every penny.
Right. So that's not, you can't just put it wherever you want?
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else?
Regarding the additional funds up to $60,000, where exactly is that coming from?
So, so two things. One was the project initially came in lower on the bid, which allowed for more room. And then additionally, the original engineer's estimate had an hourly rate of a senior project engineer, and the one that was actually assigned was not a senior, and it wasn't the same rate. So there was some savings with that. So those combination of those two factors led to a surplus of $60,000, approximately.
And that's just within the housing rehabilitation program?
No, that's the grant, the total grant.
The total, okay.
Yep, within the $800,000.
All right. Okay.
Anyone?
Again, Mr. Chairman, the housing rehabilitation program is, those who financially qualify were getting grants to do important repairs such as, you know, heating, windows, doors, roofs, things that are important to maintain a home that may not be readily available to some folks.
Okay, good to know. Good to know. Anybody else have any comments, questions, concerns? No? No? Hearing none? Any comments from the public? Anybody has any comments or concerns or questions? No? No. Hearing none? I'd like to close the public meeting at, public hearing at 6:52 PM. Okay. Anybody have anything? John, that was great. Thank you very, very much.
Appreciate it.
Me too.
Mr. Chairman, you had a motion?
At this time, we are looking for, um... Yes?
Through the chair, Mr. Town Administrator, how would you like that worded?
I'm gonna ask John to come up and specify those amounts so you can vote accordingly.
John, when you have a moment?
We just need the specific amounts to vote on?
Okay, sorry about that. So one amendment would be to reprogram approximately $30,000, or up to $30,000, to go towards the First Ave New Improvement Project for purposes of reclamation of the roadway. And then the second one would be to potentially reprogram an additional $60,000 into either additional support funds for the First Ave project or an additional housing rehab unit worth of work. So into the housing rehabilitation assistance program, keep it more broad. That way it gives the town some flexibility. Could go to either of those.
Either one?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll start with the first one, with the First Ave, the $30,000.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Johnson.
I'd like to make a motion to reprogram up to $30,000 for the purpose of reclamation of the roadway in the First Avenue project.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Do we have discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. On the second one, do we have anybody to make a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Johnson.
Make a motion to reprogram up to $60,000 into housing assistance program?
Second.
Will you finish with the motion?
Yes.
And we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion?
Could I just add, sorry, and/or the First Ave Avenue Improvement Project?
To keep that into the motion?
To the second one, yes, right. And/or First Ave Improvement Project?
As part of the motion, do you accept that?
Yes.
Second, do you accept that?
Yes.
Any comments, questions, concerns, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Thank you very much, John.
I appreciate it.
Super job.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna go to number five on the agenda, the Town Administrators Report. Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to give an update on the Amoresco project at the cap landfill, which we haven't heard a lot about probably in the last year. Give you some highlights on the work performed. As of this month, tree cutting work was completed along the road leading to the site entrance. The fence ballast installation was completed around the site. Fence installation will be started at a later date. Electrical pole installation was completed. Work was started installing equipment on the electrical poles. The equipment pad installation was started. Machine test pits were dug and backfilled. Confirmed trench line in the outside cap limits and conduit trench was dug to the first pole. Conduit was installed, and the trenches backfilled. That work has been completed. So now we're at the point of having completed the installation of the electrical poles and placing equipment on those poles. It would appear that we can see the finish line for the solar project on the cap landfill. It should be, should be hopefully this calendar year, which will give us the opportunity to start generating some revenue off that site. to start generating some revenue off that site, helping to pay for compliance and regulatory costs that were caused by that site.
Right.
So at least we're getting to the point of seeing the finish line.
Roughly to start using money from that ballpark?
I don't want to go on the record. It'll be, it'll be this year though, I think.
Okay, possibly.
Yeah.
Okay.
We've also, actually, we've already used the site development fee towards the regulatory compliance a year or two ago of about $50,000 bucks to help offset those costs. The next item, Mr. Chairman, at the time of budget prep for this fiscal year, our best information about potential out-of-district students attending the Norfolk Agricultural School had us set a placeholder in the line item of $29,500. We are now receiving word that the transportation cost, which was unknown at the time of preparing for the FY25 budget, is $25,000. That is a total of $52,905 that will be required for the out-of-district tuition and transportation cost with a placeholder of $29,500 currently in the line item. So as we move towards the October special town meeting and prepare our supplemental budget and free cash numbers become available, that's one of the things that we will have to plan for. We're looking at trying to find an alternative to that $25,000 price tag for transportation. The student would actually have to get the bus, be driven to Douglas to get on the route to go to that school for 25 grand. In the past, we've done, we've had a few students that have gone, and I think it would, I think the line item was 14,000 or 15,000 in past years, Mr. Sigunovich may remember. But it was in that ballpark. It was substantially less than what we're being quoted now, but that could have been a factor of having a few students attending. So we're going to work on it, but right now it looks like $52,900 for the out-of-district costs all in.
Mr. Sigunovich?
How many students?
One.
Okay. Thank you.
We're also preparing for our annual audit, which always happens this time of year. Hopefully Sarah, our incoming town accountant, will be able to report the dates of the audit publicly at an next Board of Selectmen meeting, which is scheduled for August 19th. I'll also schedule the Board of Selectmen to officially appoint Sarah as our town accountant retroactively to this week on that date and ask the town clerk to swear her in at that time. And that's my brief report for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Great report. Mr. Administrator and Mr. Johnson?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Town Administrator's report.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Do we have any discussion?
No.
Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Is that all from the Town Administrator's office?
Yes.
So I'll go to number six, public business. Looking for the Board of Selectmen to vote to approve election warrant, state primary election September 3rd, 2024?
So moved?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, do we have to read it?
Couldn't hurry.
Sure. Done.
Yep. All right. So to the constables of the city and town of Dudley, in the name of the Commonwealth, you're hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said city or town who are qualified to vote in primaries to vote at precincts 1, 2, 3, and 4 at the Dudley Municipal Complex, 71 West Main Street, Dudley, Massachusetts on Tuesday, the 3rd day of September 2024, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM for the following purpose, to cast their votes in the state primaries for the candidates of political parties for the following offices. Senator in Congress for this Commonwealth, Representative in Congress for the First District, Counselor for the Seventh District, Senator in General Court, Worcester and Hampden County, sorry, Worcester and Hampden District, Representative in General Court, Sixth Worcester District, Clerk of Courts, Worcester County, Register of Deeds, Worcester District. Hear or fail not, and make return of this warrant with your doings thereon at the time and place of said voting, given our hands this 5th day of August 2024. It does require our signatures.
Yeah, we have a second, right?
We got a second on that motion?
Second.
Yes.
And discussion? Done. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
Thank you. I'll lift my head. Lift my head stables.
So while we're doing this, we'll go to number seven, to citizens' comments. Any citizens out there that will discuss anything that's not on the agenda?
Hi, Mary Plant from Fish Road.
I mean.
How are you? Our biggest concern is about what's been going on over with the landfill behind us and about the Fish Road reclamation and the PFAS. We would like to know, because we live right there, we just want to know what the update is about for our wells, because we're concerned about the water that we're drinking. I have grandsons and I have a son that just became a diabetic. So I'm very concerned about what's happening with the water and if we can be kept up to date and if it's something that can be put on the agenda for next time, because there's more of our families here and people in our neighborhood that are very concerned about this.
So PFAS and the wells, correct? That's major.
Yeah, that's our concern and what's going on. So we just want to have answers and we would have questions for the next time.
Okay. That'd be great.
So you'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Scott Skowski, 8 Catherine Street. I've just happened to notice that, I'm going to pull a page from one of your former selectmen, one of our former selectmen, Mr. Joseph. We're starting to see an awful lot of dual poles, dual telephone poles. They replace, put up a replacement and then the two poles sit side by side for months and even years before they get finished. I know Mr. Joseph used to push to get those fixed, finished, before allowing any other pole work to be done. Just putting it out there for, to keep it visible. But the major reason I'm standing, I got up today as an elected person in the town of Dudley. Back on July 25th, I received an email form, a bulletin from KP Law about a Supreme Court issue. Supreme Court issues guidance on use of social media for elected personnel. Now, it's our town council, but I, like I said, I did receive this from another town two weeks ago. I think elected folks, elected folks, I'm sorry, elected, appointed, full-time employees should all be made aware of what has happened, of what has been said about the use of social media accounts for personal use, for, for public use. What is allowed, what isn't allowed? It's a two, I have a copy of it here. It's a two-page summary of the ruling from back in March of the Supreme Court, Linkey versus Freed. I know we're going to discuss it at our meeting on Wednesday to let folks know why we don't discuss town business on social media. But I think this is crucial information for elected personnel, especially elected personnel, but elected and appointed personnel in the town of Dudley to know. I'm just wondering why, why it hasn't been pushed out? If it hasn't been received by Dudley, then, and we need to find out from our town council why we, why Dudley hasn't received it. If Dudley has received it, why hasn't it been pushed out to personnel, to the personnel of the town? So I can give you a copy of this if you want. I have an email form, but it's just a concern.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Administrator?
So we've already met once on updating the communications policy because we prefer to roll out a single policy that applies to all town boards and commissions after we've spoken to council to interpret some of those changes to the policy. And that's what we intend to do. It should be on the next agenda. But it will be engrossed into the personnel handbook and updated in the form of the communications policy. Essentially what the ruling was, was there was a, an appeal on someone's Facebook, on a public official's Facebook account, personal Facebook account, where the public official on his personal Facebook account defriended or blocked someone who was, he thought was antagonistic and so forth. And that person who was blocked, blocked, appealed it, saying that the minute you start talking about things on your personal Facebook account from the, from the posture of an elected or an appointed local official, you've made that Facebook account become a public record. The appeal was lost, but the recommendation from KP is to put a waiver on your personal, your personal Facebook account if you're an elected town or an appointed town official, municipal official, government official in some capacity. And that should do the trick. That should pass the test to warn everyone that goes to your personal Facebook account. You're not speaking on behalf of the organization that you're representing. It's your personal Facebook account. But there's a lot of other nuances to it. So we would prefer to, to update the policy. We're already working on updating the policy. Get a draft to the Board of Selectmen who approves that update in the policy and roll it out to all boards and commissions rather than to have them meet individually, interpret them, interpret them, those policy changes on their own.
Outstanding. Mr. Johnson?
I always find that, you know, rolling out a policy and training to a policy are two different things. Can we possibly see if we can schedule training to the policy? Go through, whether it's a Q and A or some kind of live session?
So we have, as we, as we get closer to October, we're going to have a few opportunities. We have town council here, including labor council, I believe. So that would be a perfect opportunity to invite people to come to the meeting and train to that policy if they're interested. But there are a lot of nuances, Mr. Chairman, that need, that need to be meted out a little bit better than what came out in the KP bulletin and that was distributed widely to everyone.
And that'll be tightened up in the policy?
Correct.
Okay. I see what you're saying. Mr. Sigunovich?
Oh, no, I'm good. Mr. Ruda explained even more than I was going to. It was going to be two sentences, but we're good.
Okay. Madam President?
All set.
Outstanding. Okay. Thank you. Hope that helps. Mr. Skowski? Absolutely. Please do. Come up.
Hey, my name is Laura Tenelli. I live on Fish Road as well. So my neighbor brought up our concerns about the well and you have decided that that would be a good idea to put it on the next agenda. I'm wondering if we can also discuss the contamination, the soil, the contaminated soil that Ramco is bringing in? If we can discuss that at the same time?
I think that'd be a different topic, a different agenda item, and we're going to be limited to what we can actually discuss to the facts that we actually have.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that?
Yes. Depending on what information we're given, as was explained at the last meeting, what DEP gives us, will depend on what we can discuss.
Okay.
You can't just obviously throw allegations out without the facts behind it.
Okay. Right. Exactly. So I guess what we're just, we just want to stay up to date on that kind of thing. So we're just looking for reports and what you have, that's all.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Sandy Leachel from West Dudley Road. Not trying to beat a dead horse, but we do appreciate that you guys are listening to us and allowing us to speak and allowing the Board of Health agent to do his job. And we would like to perhaps have a meeting with both the Board of Selectmen and Board of Health at some point, so that we can perhaps get a well-rounded idea and discuss what we, you know, what we found and help us to look at some of the reports. I know they're testing for PFAS back there. I came upon somebody testing last week and I had a discussion with that person. So we, we definitely just don't want to throw any allegations out or anything, but we do just, we would like you guys to, you know, help us figure out where to go if there's something we should be worried about. Let us see some reports. We'll show you what we got, you know, that kind of thing. And, and do it with the Board of Health, since it's their issue too. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ruda?
Uh huh. Yep. So, and I agree that, you know, we have to get, we absolutely have to get that information onto the next agenda, which we were actually planning on doing, gathering that information, bringing forward what we possibly can. But I think there are two, two different areas of control. The Board of Health is the appropriate body to bring questions relative to PFAS to, through DEP. DEP is, is the lead agency in that matter right now. So we need to get the information from DEP and the Board of Health involved. The Board of Selectmen can certainly facilitate that and certainly can answer to the legalities involved in that and certainly make sure the process goes forward so the community has the information that they need to have. But the Board of Health is the appropriate body and right now the DEP is the lead agency in that. So we will definitely work on, for the next meeting, getting something together that satisfies all those requirements. But I just want to make sure that the expectations are understood, that there are certain people that can speak to certain topics with certain clarity and the Board of Selectmen is, is limited to the legal side of it and facilitating the community, public information and the involvement in it. The Board of Health right now is working with DEP and so DEP is going to be the key lead agency to give that information out.
Thank you, sir. That's what I was gently getting towards. Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Any comments? Any questions?
We just thank you for listening.
Thank you for...
Our concern is our drinking water.
Absolutely.
No, we, I have no problems with Ramco, but I just want to make sure my drinking water is safe.
You got it. We'll work on that and we will definitely, absolutely let you know. And thank you for coming in to speak up. Okay.
And, and Mr. Chairman, to that point, there's nothing to say that you can't test your well on your own. You don't, you don't need permission to test your own water. If that's something you feel would make you, would give you some... Yeah. Well, that's what I would be doing too.
But our concern is also if we find this is in our well system, is the town going to help us put in a filtration system that's going to help us take care of it? Because if we have that and we don't do something about it, we can't sell our own homes later in life, you know? It's a beautiful neighborhood. We love it and we just want to make sure we're all safe and my grandsons, who I take care of, are safe also.
Of course.
And I think you would do the same way as we do, that you were drinking this water every day and we want to be, we want to make sure it's safe for our own health and that nothing happens to each of us. So, and there's more, more neighbors in the neighborhood. It's a lot of people that are involved in this, so we're just concerned about water. That's all we're concerned about.
Understood.
Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you very much. Not hearing anything else, I'd like to move down to the eighth item on the agenda, Department Communications. Stub the police chief? You're all set? Outstanding. Fire chief? This is amazing.
Highways, excuse me.
Highway, go on, okay. Town accountant, Sarah?
I just want to let you know that we are in the process of closing the books. We're hoping to communicate... Um, we're hoping to communicate with Scanlon later on this week. Um, goal, to get them closed this week, to get Scanlon in as soon as they're available to come in. So, um, and then I have big shoes to fill with Deb gone, but, um, should be okay, working together.
Yes, I, I, I've talked to you. I've seen you. I, I believe in you and I know you're gonna do just fine. Thank you. Beautiful. Water sewer? Skowsky?
I just, uh, I've, I've fielded some questions. Um, again, we're gonna talk about it on Wednesday at our meeting, but more people, I think, watch yours. Folks have been asking about the project down on Village Street, um, around the mill and the roads. I just got an update from our engineer, uh, earlier today and, uh, that project is slated to start, um, third week of August or so, uh, right around the time that school buses are gonna start. I don't know what's gonna happen there, but, um, it's, it, it, there's a potential to be some, um, some, uh, challenges in getting around that neighborhood. But, um, folks need to stay, uh, keep their ear to the ground and, um, and we'll, we'll share the information as quickly as we get it.
And keep in, in touch with, tight communications with public safety?
Abs- absolutely. Let, let everybody know what's going on and, and the, the contractors usually work very well with the, uh, schools to make sure. Uh, when we did Mason Road, when we did, uh, uh, the, the last project over in that area worked well with the schools to, uh, make sure buses got through, and that sort of thing. So we'll, uh, we'll, uh, we'll make sure that the information gets out as, as quickly as we can.
Super. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Administrator?
Assistant DA has been working on mitigating some of those challenges and she could probably give a public update, real quick.
Adam, would you mind?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I've been in communication with a representative from Tag and Bond about scheduling a neighborhood meeting. Um, and the people in the Village Street, Mill Street area, anybody who's abutting the infrastructure construction zone will be receiving a letter later this week informing them of the public meeting. It will be held August 14th, I believe, whatever that Thursday is next week. Um, that'll be at 5:00 PM at the Dollar General parking lot here on West Main Street. If it's raining, it'll be in this room, 321A at the Town Hall.
Fantastic. And all that information is in that letter?
It'll be in the letter, yep. It's a meeting facilitated by Tag and Bond and they'll have a representative from GEG there to answer any construction-related questions.
Outstanding job. Good for you. Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions on that? Common concerns? Do we have a treasurer, collector? Not here. Okay. Uh, let's go to number nine, Board Members' Comments. Mr. Sigunovich?
I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson?
I'm also good. Thank you.
Madam Clark?
I just wanted to say thank you again to the residents of Fish Road for coming to the meeting and speaking up. Um, I know it's stressful and, and we're here. We really are. So thank you.
Excellent. I'd like to thank everybody, um, and I know public safety's been pretty busy during a lot of these, uh, heat extended days of high heat, even with the rain and I'm sure the water sewer and, and rain and flooding and overflows in the basins and just, I, I just wanna thank you all for going out there when everybody else is staying inside and doing the job professionally and, and then really quick and efficiently. It's very impressive. So with that being said, if no one has anything else, I would like to go to number 10, move to executive session. The chairman? I would like, I'll be looking for a motion to move into executive session under General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, not to reconvene an open session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have a detriment, detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares fire department union personnel matter. Roll call vote after a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd, uh, like to make a motion to move into executive session under General Law, Chapter 38, subsection 21A3, not to reconvene an open session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation of an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares fire department union slash personnel matter.
Second.
We have a motion at second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Kerry Sigunovich, aye.
Jay Johnson, aye.
Jana Deshane, aye.
Mark Landry, aye. Thank you, everyone.